Did you hit the start button?
Yep. Welcome to the zoning meeting. I don't have an agenda for the zoning meeting for the zoning board at Summers on March 18th, 2019. This is a-
Special meeting.
-special meeting. We're going over zoning regulations. Present, we have Dan Ferro, Carl Walton, Lucas Cherry, Jennifer Roy, staff liaison, Glenn Chalder with Planum-
Metrics.
Metrics. I also have a Planomatic-
No, no, there's a Plantronics.
And Bud Nor- and also First Select and Bud Nor is present. We are going over our zoning
regs. We are- where do we start?
Starting at section eight?
Eight?
Eight. So, we've been through the regulations. I think from section eight to the end is fairly straightforward. I was joking a little bit when I said we could be out of here by seven, but it's quite possible. The reason is this. Section eight is fairly straightforward. The first section, section 8.1, is the section that lays out some dimensional exceptions in the regulations. For example, when we measure front yard setbacks, we usually measure to the foundation. When they put the eve on, it projects back. So, some communities historically required that the eaves had to comply, and the rain gutters created crazy situations.
Wow. Seems insane.
So, it's just, I think, practical to say that we'll give an exception for an eve projecting into a setback, or if somebody decides to take out a picture window and put in a bay window, a bay window, or a basement hatchway. These are sort of normal things that come along with a house, and so some of these dimensional exceptions are spelled out in here. 8.1A is yard setbacks. So, yes, driveway, windowsills, door frames, belts, cornices, architectural features, chimneys, bay windows, eaves, those types of things. So, I think the other sections of the regulations refer to this. So, I think this is okay. Section on the next page, section-
Eight two.
Eight one B is height. Church spires, bell frieze, domes, chimneys, skylights, again, are generally exceptions to height. We measure building height to the midpoint on the eve, but the building code requires that the chimney extend above.
Right.
Give an exception for that. Eight one C is lot frontage and area exceptions, and this is, I think, language from your current regulations, which was put here in terms of lot frontage exceptions. So, I think eight one, this is material which is here just for ease of reference. Anything in here?
Carl, is that that letter B, lot frontage, is that- have you ever seen any issues or anything come up?
Where? Letter B where?
Page 132, section C.
Oh, C.
One A?
No, there's not been any- there's not ever been any contention on pre-existing non-conforming-
Okay, alright.
That I can recall. No, no one was ever been called for that.
Okay, cool.
If that's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
And that's both from the planning and the zoning perspective, I can't think-
In this case law too, it protects a lot. Even if subdivided, you changed your regulations. The lot is protected until it's built on. After it's built on, then-
Then it's sort of stuck there wherever it was built on.
And Dan, I know you had some comments or questions regarding subdivisions. I noticed there's C mentioned subdivision. Is that- did we address that as a committee?
I don't know. I mean, I know I'm not Dan, but I don't know that there's ever been any issue with re-subdivisions approved because-
Okay.
It would be remaining land.
Basically says if a lot was legally established-
Right, then it's legal.
You can build on it. That's what this section says. Even though it doesn't comply with the lot area requirements today, or the lot frontage requirements today-
There's nothing-
-if it was legally established at that time, and as long as you can get a septic on it and get a well on it, you can build on it.
I remember we had one, this may have been the ZBA, but the Antonacci's house burned, and it was something about road, you know, at the four corners there. But, yeah, but yeah-
Is the barn burned down?
Nah, you would make right at the- and it used to be a house on the left, I guess, or barn or some-
Where are you?
Barn burned.
Where are you?
Well, their property's so big, it's hard to-
Well, no, there's various parcels-
Ninth District Road and intersection-
No, they tore a house down.
They tore a house down there. They built in that corner.
Okay, but if you make a right there, and then it's like the first lot on the left, there used to be something there, and it was-
Yeah, that burnt.
Yeah, but that wasn't theirs. That's not theirs.
Oh, yeah. I was just saying, I can't remember the name of the-
No, that burned. Actually, it's still vacant.
Yes.
The one that burned is still vacant.
Yep.
It was, trying to remember who owned it, unbilled, because it's just off the intersection with Ninth District.
Correct, exactly.
But there's a house on the corner, and then there's a lot that's still vacant. There was a house there, had a swimming pool and everything.
Okay, yep. And I know-
I don't remember whose it was.
And something about-
Hannan's.
Hannan. I didn't think that was the Hannan though, because I know there's another Hannan on George Will.
I just wanted to make sure that-
But I don't think-
If that's considered a lot, that the new changes wouldn't-
Oh, no, nothing would change on that. That's a lot of record, and there was a building on it, and there wouldn't be anything other than it would have to comply with setback, but the house that was there did anyway.
Yep.
Because there's nothing left of the original house.
Correct, yep.
They tore it all up, as far as I remember.
This was years, you know.
But it's still vacant.
Yep, okay.
Anything else on eight one?
No.
Eight two has to do with non-conforming conditions. This is, again, what happens with the non-conforming lot, and non-conforming use, or non-conforming structure. And they're all just a little bit different in terms of- non-conformities are allowed to continue, but if you're going to make changes, the change is to bring it into greater conformity. You can't make it more non-conforming.
Right.
So, this section of the regulations lays out the situation. So, if you had the trifecta, right, a non-conforming building on a non-conforming lot with a non-conforming use, each of these sections will spell out how you deal with that and that type of situation.
Okay. Any consideration.
So, and the biggest change here is the change last year in the legislature having to do with abandonment.
Yes.
So, I think this is fairly straightforward. Section 8.3 is telecommunications.
Your recommendations are just following the state ruling.
State statutes, case law, and what-
Yeah, we don't really have a choice there.
Yeah.
Section 8.3 is telecommunications facilities. This section here deals with the different types of antennas. This is modified from your current provisions because the commission really doesn't have jurisdiction or discretion over almost all towers. The only towers you have discretion over are what are called municipal towers.
Right.
Just towers put up on town property for town purpose. You can regulate those. And then the second thing is a building mounted, like a church, or in a steeple, or something else like that. But other than that, any other tower, the Siting Council reserves jurisdiction for itself. So, this has been crafted to spell out who's got responsibility for different types of towers.
So, this makes it clearer then?
I believe it does.
That's good.
That's really good.
It also gives you the ability to submit correspondence to the Siting Council, and say that your regulations suggest these types of things, like what they call stealth antennas.
Yes.
And when they see that, you can influence their work. The generation of technology is now going to a new type of technology, which is essentially sort of 5G, but it's smaller cells.
That's what they're calling it.
Yeah, the internet of everything, where you'll have receivers and lights at the parking lot, that, you know, cars and doll.
So, 1G was the very first towers, and those are set up like two and a half mile radii. Now, we're down to the next generation, and the amount of data that gets transferred, much smaller cells. So, Summers is probably going to be a little bit behind the curve on what's going on in more populated areas. But eventually, it's going to come to the point that the towers will be somewhat redundant, and everything's going to occur in little, like Samsonite suitcases on telephone.
Really? They're going to get rid of the towers?
So, Eversource will collect all the rent.
5G first.
Technology is going to be surpassed by this new technology, which it's remarkable to see it.
5G's, I mean-
The cost of a tower installation is significant. The cost of a suitcase is-
Nothing.
I know they're working, yep, with super eaten lighting manufactured, you know, the major, and putting those in, you know, along interstates and the lights, parking lots, you know, and a small upcharge, and it would tie into the system, so better coverage in the data that's transferred.
Yep, no holes.
And the thing that's changing too is that historically, these- the tower facilities were regulated by what was known as Connecticut Siting Council, and the new technology, because it gets mounted on telephone poles, is regulated by PURA.
Correct.
Because it's considered to be part of the telephone and electrical network, as opposed to a cellular network. So, again, I think all of this is addressed in here. I think it's unlikely you'll ever have something come before you. But if you do, I'd be up to the set of regs to bill. Section 8.4, is earth removal and filling?
Yep. There are very few changes to this, I'm guessing.
I don't think there have been. So, I've got a couple of notes here on things to change. The language, if you will, on financial guarantees. We don't call them sure performance bonds anymore. We call them financial guarantees.
Oh.
Same thing.
The statutes. So, I think that brings us to 8.5. And this one, I just, I put this little cartoon picture on sidebar in section 8.10.
Let's see. Oh, yeah, that's our- is that Carl, the town attorney?
Oh. So, the funny thing is, is the way the language reads here is that an adult establishment has to be located at least 1,000 feet from a school which is in operation at least eight days a week.
Right.
And that's, there's no school. You don't have eight days a week. You don't have to-
How did the Beatles write that?
You don't have to have a setback from the school because there's no school that meets that standard, so.
Well, what about the song?
You could try humming that. Hum a few bars, and we'll see if it works for us. So, in other words, clearly that wasn't the intent.
Well, it even fits because it's eight days a week. I love you. So, you know, adult establishments, eight days a week.
Carl, we're on tape. We are recording.
I know. You're the one who pointed it out.
Well, I couldn't believe when I'm reading it. It's the type of thing you read to yourself, no, that really can't be in there.
But you'll change it.
It is, it's in your current-
Until you ventured it, no one noticed it.
Wait, that was in our regulations?
I didn't put it in.
Well, how often do we have adult oriented establishments coming up before us?
Yes. I think there was a time too.
Yeah, there was one in Somersville. There was one in Somersville.
Yeah.
So, that will be changed to seven?
No, I think-
They need to be changed to five.
Five, yeah, because you're only in school five.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Wow, I can't believe that's in there. That's hilarious.
I can't believe you didn't fix it. You just wanted to-
Well, he wanted to show it. He thought it was funny.
I did. I mean, it's just- so, that brings us through section eight to section nine. Section nine is the procedure section. Now, this section is, I think we have kept very little of your current regulations here. Your regulations were out of touch with most of the statutory and other requirements, and weren't organized clearly and concisely.
Right.
So, the regulations here have been established in a way to kind of lay out staff procedures for a zoning permit, and a certificate of zoning compliance, a pre-application review with the commission for somebody to come in, and then what happens on a site plan, a special permit, a map change, a text change. And it almost reads, laid it out, sort of like a flow chart. This is what happens first, and then the application's received. This is the notice period and all the things. So, either for an applicant, or for residents or butters, or people who may not be familiar with the zoning process, and they say, well, you know, what's going on with this? Regulations should lay this out for them in pretty straightforward fashion.
Now, you may know this, or Carl, or Dan, or Jennifer, didn't we, at one point, we addressed these small sheds, you know, eight by 12, or 10 by 12 sheds, that are not on any type of footing or foundation, that they would not be required to have a permit if it's movable?
We didn't do it, but I believe it was addressed in the building permit process, correct?
You don't need a building permit.
Would they used to make them get a building permit?
Right, but the state statute changed. Anything under 200 square feet, you don't need a building permit. We have them fill out a building permit application because in the past, we had thought that if they did just a zoning permit, they would have to pay the $60 fee from land use. And that has been cleared up, that they don't need that.
They don't need to do that either?
No.
For that?
For that, for regular zoning permit. No, and I spoke to, we talked about this, I think, earlier on.
Yeah, we did.
I spoke to someone at the state that said, no, Dennis, whatever.
Yeah, they issued that, yeah.
Yeah, because he issued this letter. Yeah, so, we can have just a zoning permit now, once we effectively change this.
And if somebody has a 10 by 10 plastic or wood shed pre-built, just going to put on gravel or something?
I still would have them get a zoning permit.
They still do? Okay.
Well, I think the issue we're concerned about mostly is setbacks.
Oh, okay, setback.
Right.
So, if somebody calls up clodder farms and clodder farms delivers, hopefully clodder farm asks whether or not-
They usually tell people to come to us.
Yeah, they've got to get a site prepared, any requirement of-
You've got your shed delivered within days.
Yeah.
So, the issue would be, make sure it's located appropriately, and get your zoning permit, and you're on your way.
Yeah, okay.
So, I mean, they're still going through the town, and the town's going to assess them on this. It's not like anyone just plop these down anywhere.
Yeah, they have been, and we've just been doing it on an application that says building permit.
All right. And that's only under 200 square feet. Anything over 200 square feet needs a- or a foundation, right? If it's on a foundation, if it's under 200 square feet, or was it just-
Yeah.
I don't know if they would put it on a foundation if it's under 200 square feet and they might, but it's a country.
Yeah.
I mean, clodder farms generally does not.
Yeah.
No, I have one. They just slide it off onto rocks. Yeah.
Okay.
So, I think, again, the site plan application is a big thing here, is I think in the current regulations today, site plan and special permit are kind of smushed together.
Yep.
And it's kind of hard to figure out what standards apply to each, and it's an important distinction under the law. A site plan approval is an administrative approval-
Yep.
-that the commission really does not have a lot of discretion on. Your job is ensuring compliance with the standard. Special permit, on the other hand, is a discretionary approval. It's, you've got to demonstrate, the applicant has to demonstrate that they comply with the conditions. But by splitting them up, we now make clear that on an administrative application, this is what happens, and on a special permit, this is what happens. That's in here is section 9.3, and then section 9.4.
So, a site plan still comes to the commission, or does not come to the commission?
Site plan comes to the commission. Well, some towns have given discretion for site plan approvals to staff, but the town most familiar with that is about to give it back to the commission because staff decided they didn't want the responsibility.
Right, so I didn't understand separating out. So, really, you're just separating out zoning permits.
So, zoning permit is a staff-related approval?
Right.
So, it doesn't say in the regulations that a new residential dwelling requires site plan approval.
Right.
Permitted by zoning permit, you do that.
Right.
A new commercial building, a business district, the site plan comes to the commission.
Okay.
Or some use that may rise to level of special permit, again, comes to you, but now you're acting in a quasi discretionary situation, where a site plan is-
Yeah, they reviewed both of them anyways.
We did, yeah.
They're just re-woting away, reviewing what you're saying.
Yeah, and I think the legal standards are different, so when they're smushed together-
We were going to change the emphasis away from site plan to special use, so that there was more options for us.
Right.
And I think if you had them together, you'd run the risk of applying a special permit standard to a site plan and that matches which is how it works.
Right.
Correct.
Section 9.0, oh, page 174, 175. These are the special use permit requirements or standards, so that if somebody came in for a special permit, in terms of findings of consistency, you would look at these blue boxes here and say, okay, is the proposed use, do I feel it's an appropriate location? Does it contribute to orderly development? Does it enhance or detract from public safety? And so, I think these criteria here would give the commission the ability. If you go through this checklist, if you're well, and feel comfortable that the applicant has addressed these, you would perhaps be inclined to act favorably on the application. If, on the other hand, you're starting to have alarm bells go off about traffic or something, you would want to seek more information from the applicant, or from staff, or somebody to fully understand this, maybe condition the approval before you move ahead.
Right. And this is good because it's going to give us a map through the process.
Yes.
Which we might have gone through anyway, but now we've got a roadmap.
Right, yeah.
Some towns have actually done flow charts.
Same kind of thing.
Step two, step three. So, this doesn't words, but-
Yeah, yeah.
Same kind of thing.
So, we skip through, page 164, I have, you have this commission site, which is 1.1.
Ask commission about-
That's about notice to a butters?
Public hearings.
Hold a public hearing.
What do you mean, a notice mailed out to every-
A budding progress.
The applicant needs to notify everybody within 100 feet of the subject property by certified mail.
But site plan is not required.
No, but-
So, the question is, if the commission can't hold a public hearing on a site plan application-
Couldn't have a site plan. We did it for-
Henry's.
Yeah.
And the challenge there is the timeframe doesn't change.
No, no. Timeframe didn't change.
No, it doesn't. But on a site plan, if you haven't acted in 65 days, the statute's considered to be automatically approved. So, you've got to make it really careful that if you hold a public hearing and think that you've got the 65, 35, 65, you do not.
Well, they didn't know, so they gave us the extensions we needed in that case.
Good. So, the question is-
We didn't know either.
So, this question here that Jen pointed out-
How recently did that change?
What, the statutes have always said?
I don't know. Because we had the ability to hold a public hearing on a site plan application if it was, I'm trying to remember what the foothold was.
Important to the community.
Yeah, if there was concern, you know, uptick in concern from the community.
You're still being here. You still have the option.
No, 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 I know. But we didn't necessarily start to finish in 65 days because of what went on in it.
Oh, yeah.
They dragged their feet. We showed up for a couple meetings unprepared. Everything went wrong in that one.
I think the challenge you might find yourself in is if I'm an applicant here, I'm role-playing here. I submit my application to you. The clock starts ticking on the statutory date of receipt, which is defined in here.
Yep.
And then the commission at the first meeting says, you know, I think we should hold a public hearing on this. So, Jen, go ahead and schedule a public hearing, and let's say it's next month. You've got to do the notices and everything else. And then we show up, and you decide to continue the hearing. We're now at the end of 65 days.
Pretty much, yeah.
And if you have not asked me for an extension-
Well, yeah.
You're automatically approved?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it is.
So, the issue would be, you'd say, Glenn, we'd like an extension.
Well, that was part of the motivation, I think, that Carl Andalina talked about. We should look at the things that are site planned versus special use permit.
Yeah.
And I think-
And probably would have, if we had gotten to this one we originally intended to.
So, on page 164, 3B says, the applicant shall give notice to property owners. Is that what you would like to do?
Well, I mean, I always thought we had to.
I like to. I mean, I always liked the signs in front of the property. I always loved that because-
What do you mean the signs?
The signs, I know.
Say, this property is subject to blah, blah, blah.
Because this property is subject to a public hearing. And then it lets, because, you know, you could be 110 feet away and want to know what's going on, and you're going to, you're not going to get that letter. And if you don't, you're not friendly with your neighbor, you're not going to know about it. I mean, like, a lot of towns do that. We don't.
Who pays for all those signs?
Well, they committed, they give a deposit, they take the signs, and they get their money back when they bring the signs back. They have to post the sign.
Yeah, because it's a generic sign. It says-
Yeah, it just says public hearing.
Your shoulders and the people's shoulders?
Well, it just says, call the-
They have to come to land use.
Call the land use department, and there's a phone number, and they can come down and look at the file, or call and ask.
I think it's fair to the people that live there.
I do too.
Yeah, but I also think it's a good idea to require a notification of the 100 butters.
So, I don't know, off the top of my head, what statute says about notification?
Well, it's right here. Section 9.8G is the general statutes, I think. It's not this.
We thought, we looked at this-
Can it be a notification to a butter or a sign?
Or a combination of both?
So, if we have signs, do they, you know what I mean?
I think you still have to-
You would want to spell out in your regulations.
Yeah.
You could require one or the other, or both.
Yeah.
I mean, I think both makes sense. You want to make sure that the direct of butters are notified.
Yeah.
And really-
I think you have to.
You can't really be totally sure, even if you ask them to submit the stubs from the notification.
You can't be absolutely sure. I mean, if you notify a butters by paper-
Registered mail.
People that live behind them, going around, they get it. If you put a sign up, the person that lives behind might say, well, I didn't see the sign. I don't drive by the house, you know.
Yeah, I think you have to do both.
I think you're going to do both.
And I know, yeah.
Yeah. I think you've got to do both.
I mean, we looked-
I want to make a couple comments about that. I agree you should do both.
Yeah.
Because I've had a lot of complaints by citizens saying they weren't aware of-
Right. I think we have to do both. We need to make sure everybody knows what's going on.
But they don't get the paper, the public notice.
I'm shocked that people would call and complain to you.
You can do it two hours.
You know, we did talk about this a few years back, like, quite a while back, like, maybe eight years back. And it was like, well, you know, keeping track of the signs, and people picking them up. And you know what? I didn't, I think it's, I always wanted them.
I came through East Granby on my way over. East Granby has a white sign that they
Yeah, black lettering.
get pretty- That's property subject of a public hearing, and he gave the phone number.
Yeah, phone number, or the address, like, town hall.
For information call.
Called. I mean, I love that idea.
Other towns actually have it, so it's got a little box that you can-
Tells the date or whatever.
Site plan, or special permit, or the date of the moment.
You could put a date in it, like, with a Sharpie.
Yeah, you pre- so, the signs, I mean, I sometimes use signs for public meetings. They're not that expensive.
No.
Yeah.
And people pay for them. They're going to come in and write a check, and you're going to give them a sign for their property, and then they're going to bring it back, and they're going to get their money back.
It's almost better if they do just pay for it. I could probably find out, I vote my change. I'd like to just, I mean, we got them from DG Graphics. They're not expensive.
They're not. So, if you got 30 cents for five hundred bucks.
30 cents and 500 bucks?
Yes, like five bucks a piece.
Right. So, if they're buying them off us for $5 or $10, they don't have to worry about that.
And it comes with a little metal stake.
If they give me a deposit, then that's, you know, then I've got to buy it and get the money back.
It comes back and it's dirty, and the thing's got to sell it to them.
Right, yeah, I see what you're saying.
It's just better making them buy it. And then I suggest-
You charge them more, and you get a free sign.
What the town's gone through to train and inform people is, I think, beyond what you would think. I mean, there's an app you can download. You can push emails. You can tell a server service what you want. You can livestream the meetings. You can do these. But when you go back and look at it, I think our last meeting, 11 people watched. It's hardly worth the money we expended as a town to do all this.
The point is, some people are computer lettering, they don't want to look at the town website, they don't want to look at livestream meetings.
Well, you can't, you can't, they want to be spoon-fed, and you can't do that.
No, I understand, but I think a sign would be great.
Well, the thing, I, I think the sign.
Sign and a letter is great.
I think the sign says, okay, I live here on Main Street, and five houses down, there's a sign, and I want to know what's going on. If, if the sign wasn't there, I would never know, because I'm not looking, but you're only interested when it's in your area, when you, you know. So I, I mean, I've always been a firm believer that signs are a great idea, so.
So one sign for street frontage, and then.
So if it's a corner, you'd need two signs.
Yep, because I think again, because it affects both streets, but then, how many signs per x feet?
Oh, God, we want to get into.
Really? No, just one, one near property.
I think one, one frontage, otherwise it's going to look, people won't look because it'll be too many.
I don't want it to be a.
Okay, there have been situations in the past where you have a very long piece of property, and people want the sign in front of the frontage, but not near where, so.
Some people are that.
Can we say the sign needs to be placed, like, in the center of the frontage?
No, I don't even want to get into that.
Because, like, you, well, you could place it behind a tree in the back, like, you don't want anyone to see it.
It's got to be on the street.
It's got to be visible from the street.
I'll add logical place.
Yeah.
I think the only other thing Jen and I wanted to talk.
Easily viewable, an easily.
Logical, visible.
Logical, visible.
Yep.
Location.
So the requirements right now in section nine eight G of these regulations calls out for the fact that it's certificate of mailing, which is different than certified. Certified is the very expensive mailing option, where you fill out the certificate.
Then you turn in the stubs.
You have to sign for it, and then the green cards come back.
Yeah, and you get the return back, yeah.
We're not saying that, what we're saying is certificate of mailing, which is you can either fill out that little slip, or actually you can fill out a sheet that the postmaster checks and then stamps, and then they turn that in.
Right, and it just says you send orders to these.
So it's proof of mailing, but not proof of delivery or receipt.
Right, right.
Which stops people playing the game of knowing it's coming and not signing for it and saying, I wasn't notified.
Right.
So, the issue is, we're setting this up to require the mailing and proof of mailing, and if you don't collect your mail or anything else.
That was, by recollection, is that was all that was required before, they turned in the stubs.
Sometimes it goes both ways.
They turned, well, we didn't, we turned in the stubs that showed that they made a good effort, good faith effort, they sent them to all the people within a hundred feet or whatever.
And does that statute say it has to be certificate of mailing?
I don't think the statute, I'll check, Jen.
So I've read it, I've read it, and I can't remember which direction, because in Vernon, here's what we did, and it takes a little bit of burden off the applicant, which I know it's their application, but, you know, they're, they're.
Yeah.
Still, we would just send a little, a letter, like, one little, one, two liner, the enclosed agenda may have an application that would be of concern to you or something to that effect. It's just, and then we would just copy the agenda and send it.
I mean, barring that it's a large subdivision they're doing, the most they're going to have is four, I would think, maybe six.
Right.
Right, I'm just saying that we knew that they went out.
Yeah, but I mean, they're not going to be in the hundreds or in the teens even.
Just putting that out there.
Yeah, no, I got you. And I guess we've got to go through and fine tune what things we think, or did we do that already, what things we think need to be elevated to special use permit that were site planned, etc.
Yeah, so I think that was back in, I think, section four, which is the business, so.
Page is that.
Starting on page fifty-nine.
Yep.
All right, we can see, yeah.
So I have a couple of changes, but not many. So most of these are set up for special use permits. So that would be pages, what, fifty, fifty-nine, sixty.
You had already gone through, you went through and made the changes you thought were necessary, I believe.
I, I think at this point, I think we could turn more things into site plan versus special use permit. Maybe the thing is, I'm feeling the need to get to the next draft for you, to kind of show everything where we're at.
Yeah.
And I can make a big note in the next version that says, review these pages for possible conversion of special use permit to site plan.
We were talking about going the other way.
The way, site plan to special use permit, yeah, to.
Because we had uses like gas stations.
Most of these are special use permits, so there's not much to change.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying, I think there are changes to reflect in here.
I think we did it already.
Okay, all right.
You know, because gasoline sales used to be site planned, now it's special use permit, that was one that was a point of contention. You know, motor vehicle sales and service same thing liquor store, some of them we don't really have that much regulation over.
Okay.
I just brought that up before to refresh my memory as to whether we'd addressed it, and it looks to me like we did. Because there's only a few things now that are site planned.
Are we back in section nine?
Section nine, yeah, so Carl's here, last month we talked about GBA.
Yeah.
Think we're, Carl had a couple of tweaks there.
There now.
And then, so that was section nine point seven, and section nine point eight is what I would call common elements. So every application has a date of receipt, and it's defined here, so every application says date of receipt is in accordance with nine eight B, meaning complete application can be denied in accordance with nine eight C. Consultations in accordance with, notice by newspaper, newspaper in accordance with. So I think rather than repeating this in every section, put it here, and then just keep referring.
Referring back to it.
So it makes it consistent. That opens us to the end?
Yeah, it does.
So I think if the commission is comfortable, I think my job is to scrape the next addition of the regulations with the changes that we've talked about. My normal practice would be that all this text stays black, and then the changes that I make get revisions marked, they show up in red. So that way you can clearly on each page see the change that was made, say yes, I recall us talking about that, making those changes, et cetera. Is that's only the plan?
It does.
Yes.
Do you want to talk about zones?
Well, this zone, I'm looking at this chart here, everything's pretty much.
The dimensional standards, I believe, are the same between the zones.
Except the only difference is, is the, the building footage, footprint, the building footprint is different from an A zone to an A one zone. That's the only thing that's missing on here.
Because we're getting away with that, because.
Well, I mean, but we haven't yet, so.
Well, statutorily, or case law, I thought that that was some minimum square footage.
So that's not right now, the conversation we had on this previously is the Connecticut Supreme Court's, nineteen eighty-five, that there's no public health, safety, or welfare justification for that, so if you, if you go to minimum floor area.
So are we taking minimum floor area out completely?
It's a decision for the commission, if, if you go to court on it.
We will lose, right?
You will not prevail.
So.
So you can, you can leave it in, and because you've always had it, and run the, the risk, or take it out.
So going forward, you can pencil mine in, I didn't put it there because we all knew that that was a difference.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 I know, I know we talked about, but I just.
Probably doing away with this, so.
So, but is this the way?
Other than that, these are the significant differences in A and A one.
I think it's like twelve hundred and fourteen hundred for the first floor, isn't it, something like that?
A little bit less, but right, there's only like, really, a hundred or two hundred square foot difference.
Difference, yeah.
But this is more major stuff that you would want to be concerned with, if you did away with the separate zones. I know that, too, right?
Okay, now I raise the question I had earlier about covenants. You know, covenants that we have nothing to do with, but evidently some exist in the A zones. I mean, nothing we.
It's really a simple matter.
Yeah, it's a development.
I got you.
Yeah, so I don't get your question, though, what, I mean.
If somebody came in to pull a permit from Jen in a way that violated their covenant, we would have no way of knowing.
Right.
We would issue the permit because it complies with the zoning, if the neighbors wanted to appeal that and say, you violated the covenant, they could do so, but the town has no role in this, it's not part of our regulatory system. So, I mean, there are covenants historically that have.
I mean, I thought that there was some differentiation in the zones and lot size, too.
No.
But evidently there aren't.
No, that you think it.
But there are no one acre lots in the A zones that I'm familiar with.
There are.
There are.
Yeah, there are one acre lots there, not maybe available, like, for instance, Hall Hill Estates, those are three acres, that's because the builder put that in there, I'm going to have three acre lots. They're going to be three acres, you're not going to have clotheslines, you can't have fencing or whatever, right? All those, you know, those kinds of things.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
If that is the case, if there's a covenant for a three acre piece of property, theoretically, they could subdivide it, is that correct?
No.
Yeah, well, it happened on, it happened on Highland View.
I mean, I guess you can do anything, and it's like what Glenn said.
It happened on Highland View.
If the neighbors don't want to hold you to the covenant, you could do what you want.
So how did they, how did that happen?
So you're a realtor, how, so if you're going to buy a piece of land, you're helping your client buy a piece of land, how would you find out that there's covenants in that?
They're on the deed.
Well, that usually, yes, they're in the deed, and they're also, if you're working with a builder, the builder's going to enforce them, because he's going to keep everybody happy. But once the builder's out, somebody, I mean, that lot changed hands a couple times.
So when it changes hands, then how does that?
Then the neighbors, I mean, so maybe, I mean, I don't know if they have a homeowners association over there, I don't think they do, but who's, who's policing that for them, I don't know, but they were able to subdivide a lot and get two houses. Now, they're the, that's the only one in that subdivision, so.
Where's that?
Highland View. I mean, it was all done through planning and whatever, it wasn't.
We have no way of ensuring that all the covenants in town get.
The zoning?
Yeah.
Complied with.
We would have a responsibility to make sure anything that was proposed complied with the town's regulations.
The town's.
If in fact there was a private covenant about that property that said you couldn't do it, that's a private matter between private parties, we have no role.
Exactly.
So it's not our job to enforce, what if the covenant was racial?
No, I only raised.
Right, no, I think what happens is as time goes by, it gets lax, like in the beginning, the new owners, they're reading it, the builder's saying, you can't have a picket fence, you can't do this, you can't have an above ground pool, you can't have a clothesline, can't tie a dog up. And then as time goes by, houses turn over, and everybody kind of forgets about them, because nobody reads their deed.
I read it once.
You did? Yeah, when the attorney was reading it to you at the closing?
They've got to hold the check, you read the deed, right?
Signed the check over, so I think that's what happens.
Well, Jen would have to sign it.
So people think, I mean, they're there, but they're not, like you said, they're not enforced, really, they are in the early ages, stages, but then.
Okay.
As time goes by, they kind of like.
I mean, I guess my only issue with doing this is some of these areas that built up, it's not every area in town, it's some exclusive areas. It's almost all built. In the case of Hall Hill Estates, I think there's a couple lots left that haven't been built or sold, one was just sold within the past month.
Yeah.
I'd hate to turn it all on its head and have it all re-subdivided and everything broken up, because everybody's not going to want that.
There's no difference in the dimensional standards, they're between two districts.
You need to focus on what the differences would be.
It's really just the uses.
Because, I mean, those lots are a lot of record as three acre lots, right? So what would happen, let's say you had a subdivision where you had twenty houses, eighteen houses have been built over the last twenty-five years, and there's two empty lots. Somebody's going to go in, let's say you eliminated the A zone, but those two lots are three acre lots.
If they have the required frontage and the required lot size, they can divide it.
Don't you, don't you look back at the subdivision, though, when this property was?
If they have, if they meet the current regulation, they can divide it.
Okay, so somebody could go in and take one lot, and if they have enough frontage, they could get three lots, three one acre lots.
Somebody could apply for anything.
Yeah, right, they may not get it, they may not.
Somebody could apply to rezone it to quarter acre lots.
Mm-hmm.
And the commission is not going to allow that to occur, but the issue is our zoning, either the A or the A one, says minimal lot size, one acre, minimum frontage, this.
One acre, right, yeah.
If somebody buys a three acre lot and wants to try to subdivide it in the future, they would have to demonstrate, as Jen says, that they meet all the dimensional and other standards. And if it met your regulations, the town's regulations, I would think you would be in a position where it would be very hard to deny that.
Right.
Yes.
Whether or not somebody could actually go through with it, though, I would imagine the neighbors might jump all over that in terms of the covenants.
Right, that would be when, if anyone knew about a covenant, they would step in before the planning commission.
Deed says you can't do that.
Before they subdivide it, but.
That's not our, our.
Oh, no, 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 I wasn't, I wasn't raising the issue because I thought it was. I wanted to know how ours affect any of that, or do that, that was all.
No, I think the, the issue that came up in terms of the possible combination of the two districts related to the differences in the uses, I think in the A one or the.
Well, you were saying somebody should be able to have a home occupation. Right.
And the, the town, that's not in the covenant, that's in our regulations, it says, people in this district can't work out of your house.
Right.
And many people do.
Well, there.
People have moved because they couldn't work out of their house there.
Degrees of working out of your house.
There are, but that's not the reg says, right?
Right, no, I understand, but there are degrees in the working out of your house.
So I think.
And some did in that neighborhood.
Somebody moved because they couldn't.
Somebody moved out because the neighbors got on them, because of the covenants. Not because of our regulations.
So I think I need some guidance from the commission as to whether or not, we had talked about a possible zoning map, and then this is a possible, new possible zoning map that shows the, the A, the A one, and then the village residential. So the yellow, if you will, is back on here. So this is a combination of the new map and the, the original map, and then the addition of the village residential districts, and then some slight changes to the village business and then the industrial districts.
So is it two zones or one?
No, it's three.
This would, this would be, right now, today, we have one.
We have four, don't we, we have industrial business.
Excuse me, we have two zones today.
Yeah. This would be, this would be three, village district.
Well, residential zones, we have two residential zones.
Village district's going to be residential zone number two.
Right, which is areas that already, they're half acre lots, they're non-conforming to the one acre zone, so they don't have to go get variances for everything, so, current zoning districts. Okay, so what we have is, the A is the yellow, the A one is the white, purple is the industrial, and the reds are business. Well, we had suggested, your discussion was to blend the A and the A one, because the dimensional standards are the same, it's just the difference of the uses. Add in the village residential district and the village business district, and some slight changes in the extent of the industrial district. And then the issue came up was, well, what if we kept the A and the A one, and then added the village in?
And what you had talked about was going through the uses and seeing which uses.
Right.
Which use relief made sense, which makes more sense to me.
I think it, yeah.
So, I mean, because passive business use, I mean, technically, when I was a sales rep on the road, working out of my house, I had a business use of my home.
Yes, you did.
When I never saw a customer, and I never did any business there, just on the phone.
And, and the number of communities allow for what you might call a home-based office, which is, nobody comes to your house, right? The minor home occupation could be, or a home office is, nobody comes to your house, people just, you just work there. And then a minor home-based business would be, you actually have employees or customers coming, and now that's a situation where you could have an impact on your neighbors.
Right.
And so you can create different tiers or levels.
I mean, for what it's worth, I just feel that those areas of town grew up the way they grew up.
Yep.
And I don't want to turn it on its head.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think that's what we're after, we're after some semblance of order without chaos.
So I probably, I, I might rename them.
Okay. I don't, that's just me, no one else.
So the dimensional standards, do you want to leave the minimum floor area in, or, or take it out?
I think if we can't enforce it, we should take it out.
It should be out if we can't, yeah.
I mean, if it, if, if it's just a lawsuit, a future lawsuit waiting to happen, we shouldn't put it in there. Seems kind of foolish.
Is there anything you want to do in terms of uses or accessory uses?
I mean, there's definite notes, there's some I'm not sure of, you know? Can we get back to you on that, we could think about it?
Yeah, I mean, I think what I'm going to do, the next job for me is to go ahead and rewrite the regulations to bring this back up to speed, so I think if I understand the commission's direction correctly, it's keep the two, the existing residential districts we have, carry that forward, and we'll continue to review it as we go. So there won't be any changes in dimensional and other standards, but in terms of, I will carry forward this, as Jen has done here, these distinctions.
Yes, and, I mean, I guess it's up to us to look at these, and we'll take input from you guys, too, as to what you feel would be.
The ones that I had highlighted, just for you to think about, was removal of earth products is one of them.
To not include.
When you put in a house in a foundation, you have to dig dirt.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 but that's not what that means.
You don't, you don't mean like.
That's not what that means.
The question is, well.
Modification of a lot, that's, I mean, they're still not, and, and no other place in town are you allowed to take all the dirt away.
No, no, I understand, but can you take, removal of, of earth products, I'm going to take a look at how we define it in the regulation, because it's.
It's, it says it's in, it can only be in, what, commercial or business?
Well, this allows it, allows it in the A one, but not in the A.
Right, but that's like, the gravel operation we have now on Wood Road is in a residential zone.
Yeah, but, yeah, but in, in the book, I think it says, um, it's commercial or business, it's only allowed in that, so.
No, no.
No, because most of those are residential zone, yeah, those are residential.
It's in an A one, because Jeff's was, Jeff's was in an A one, and Bruce Woods is in an A one, and there was one on Billings Road at one point or another.
So I think the thing I, I want to do here is, is to look at how the phrase or term removal of earth products is defined.
Yeah, I think there's, I think if you look through.
We have appropriate restrictions in place, but.
I think in the subdivision regulations, there's appropriate language that deals with what is a reasonable removal of soil.
So I just want to take, make sure that zoning, that we're not creating.
I seem to recall that, but it's been a while since I dealt with it.
The second one I highlighted was roadside Stanford products.
Is that true?
Roadside Stanford.
Jeff says, yes, that's true, a thousand square feet.
Yeah, that's what I just found.
Thousand square feet?
Yeah, removal.
So under this section, it says special permits required except for necessary incidental excavation or removal of 1,000 cubic yards or less of material on or from a lot or parcel or for any filling activity. And then it, you know, keeps going.
I mean, depending on the lots, some of them need some...
Normal agricultural operations, so it gives some exceptions. So if they're not running a gravel pit, you don't need...
Yeah, we're not running, that, that more pertains to gravel pit operation, I believe.
It's not, it's not artfully crafted in the sense that if...
We're not artful.
Do you want to note the sections, you could look at that, from 21466 through...
Now I got it.
76.
When the word says removal of earth products is not permitted, that's like it's not permitted.
You can't dig a hole for a foundation, that's a...
But I don't know what the def, where the definition, is, is there a definition in the front of our existing that identifies that? I, I don't know either.
So this is, this, it's an issue, you just want to make sure that we're not creating purgatory for.
Right.
Yeah.
Removal of any kind of soil or earth matter, including topsoil and gravel, clay, or combinations thereof.
Yeah.
So don't be digging up a pail of dirt.
You're gonna, you're gonna have a, you're gonna have a slab.
Darn, I'm guilty then, I think I took a shovel for across the street.
Did you really? Jen, you have a citation ordinance applied, don't you?
Yep.
It's just, again, it's clearly, I don't think, what we mean, but that's not what the word says.
Right, I got you.
The second one I noticed here is the roadside stand for produce. So if I grow flowers in my garden, I can't sell flowers in the A-zone.
You think you should have a gravel bank, no gravel bank operation?
No, no, I understand, I think what we want is a...
Better definition.
In this zone, here.
We want to have a cubic yard limit, I think.
Or can you just add operation?
No gravel bank operation, you know, in that, in that A-zone. And then the consular, if they want it, there's a lot of, you know, if they have to move some gra, you know, some stuff out of there, they'll still be able to do that, you know?
So the phrase, I don't think gravel, but bank operation is defined, so let me work on that, I'm with you. I get, I know what you're trying to accomplish.
This doesn't say flowers, it says produce.
Roads that stand for produce, yes.
You know, everybody doesn't want them, but if they don't have any more, they're going to be hurting when they load a gravel.
Could you reword it as, you know, earth removal operation? Put the word in it and then it would still be no in the A-zone and...
Well, so how does the commission want to do on this? Do, do you want to work this out now or do we want to kick this can down the road and deal with it later? What would you like to do?
What do you think's the best way to approach it?
I think what I'd like to try to do is to indicate, in terms of removal of earth products, there's a cubic yard limit.
Okay, that makes sense, which basically does the same thing as calling a gravel bank.
So it may be a situation that in the...
I know it's come up more often in the planning phase when people were coming in with a subdivision.
Yeah.
Because they're starting out with a raw piece of land and there was an understanding that they couldn't remove more than X amount of, off the property. They can move it around because there's not lots until they're subdivided, so. You know, in the course of putting in the roadway or whatever, doing, dividing up the lots, they're free to move it around.
Uh, roadside stand.
Roadside stand for produce.
For produce or flowers?
I don't think it matters.
If I'm growing lettuce, I can't, I can't sell it on the...
Not there?
And then the last one was the professional office and home occupation. I think professional office in most situations is a different kind of use than a home office.
Home office.
Right, home off, home office is something I think should be allowed.
I think you would say yes to a home office in there. I would say yes to a home office there.
So what did we, let me just take a quick peek, what we did for accessory uses, accessory uses, agriculture, home-based business, minor, bed and breakfast, professional office, major. So it seemed to me that we want to add in a category for home office and say, "That's okay."
Yeah.
But minor home occupation in accordance with 35A, 35A. Yeah, so a minor home occupation allows for one non-resident to be employed for that purpose. And I think what we're saying, that's what minor is, and I think what we're saying is...
Just the homeowner?
This is just a homeowner thing.
That wants to work out of his house, he has to, most people do anyways, they just, they don't put signs or anything.
They could be calling Jen and say it's a zone violation.
Yeah, yeah.
The covenant says no, that's...
Yeah, that's, we can't do anything about that. But covenants can say what they want irregardless of what our rules say. True?
So, let me just think for a second here.
Yes, they can.
So the way the regs are set up right now is that I can apply for a special use permit for a bed and breakfast. I think what we're saying is, no, you cannot in the A-zone.
Right.
You cannot do a minor home occupation, bed and breakfast, professional office, or major home occupation.
Right.
Got it.
Getting back to the, the flowers, I'm not, um, some farmers do grow flowers and they do sell them out on the street side.
No, they do.
And so what are you saying about that?
In the A-zone.
The regs right now just...
In the A-zone.
It says roadside stand.
Yeah, A-zone, you're just talking A-zone, I agree with that, I thought you were in general.
No, 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 no.
Just A-zone, okay.
Okay, so that's okay, we'll keep that?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. So I think the next version of the regulations will come back to you with three residential districts. Village and continuation of the AAA1. It may have a different name, okay?
Do you have a timeframe on that? Would it be done before in the, is that in April, on the third Monday, or...
I, I'd like to get the regulations back two, like two weeks in advance, rather than a week, to give, give you a chance to kind of ponder it as opposed to have to rush through it, so...
I'm going to be gone middle of May.
So May, May is when it's coming back, so Carl will...
That's fine.
I, I just think that I can't promise April.
No, that's fine, I just wanted to be above board and...
I feel more comfortable that May gives me the chance of, if I, if I get started on it, I push through it, I'd be anxious to come back and work with you guys, so. I will communicate with Jen, so it'd either be April...
Yeah, we can have a meeting late April.
April, yeah. Well, April 15th, I will be out that week. That's the third Monday.
Is that vacation week for the kids?
Yeah.
Forget that, you're going to have to work.
I'll be on the beach or at Disney or somewhere, wherever my kids drive me.
Or May 20th, so the, the dates would be, let me get it done.
Because, well, then there's two more Mondays though, but there's a fourth and a fifth Monday in April, so... Maybe we could shoot for one of those Mondays.
Like the 29th or...
The 29th, yeah. Because you say the end of May, I just...
Because then we get closer to summer.
Memorial Day, summer.
We want to finish this up before...
All right, so I'll tell you what, let's do this. Why don't we put down on our calendar, April 29th as a hold? I think that's about six weeks out.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure I can make that happen. And my goal would be to have it to you around April 15th, which would give you two weeks and maybe, maybe the week before, so Jen can take it on vacation with her when she goes.
So she can give you one with it when she goes back.
I don't think she's going to be re...
Questions on the airplane or something like that.
Public input, public meetings.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that in that scenario, May or June.
Okay.
I think we'll get a chance to see the next draft and kind of roll through it and say, "Okay." Because we're not, we're not adopting yet.
No, right.
But I think we could certainly share the revised draft with the community and say, "Please give us your thoughts."
Right.
Right.
So let's shoot for April...
April 29th. That's a Monday.
I mean, we don't always have to meet on Monday either. No, but if it's, you know, it's been six full weeks, it's been six full weeks since...
And then so, and then the concept of a public meeting, Jen?
Yeah.
I didn't do seven o'clock, but...
It's pretty good, 7:30 is pretty good.
Not bad, 7:30, that's pretty good for...
Well, we've done so much work already, because those are the last sections, which are actually the easiest ones because there's only not a lot of major policy choices in there.
So I guess that's it, right? Do we have anything else?
Yeah, we don't, we have minutes or anything.
No, not the minutes, all right, so make a motion.
Got no report, Jen?
No report, nothing.
No, nothing, just a zoning regulation discussion. That's it. Adjournment, that's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Carl made a motion to adjourn at, Dan seconded it, at 7:33?
7:33.
7:33, Verizon Town. All right. On paper, hi. Dan's office was on.